Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bospis.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Talantino.
Here.
Commissioner Twardy.
Here.
Okay, we're all here. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome on a snowy and blustery day and night possibly, but everybody's surviving. I would ask those with cell phones, if you would please put them on vibrate or turn them off, we would appreciate it. Thank you. Item number one, a public comment on scheduled agenda items. Any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item, not to exceed three minutes per person. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item? Yes?
Three D.
Three D. Thank you, David. Okay, moving on to item number two, the consent agenda. Deputy City Manager.
Under the consent agenda, a minute approval. One, approval of the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of April 2nd, 2018. Recommended action is to approve the minutes of the regular city commission meeting of April 2nd, 2018. Item two, acceptance of the minutes of the following boards and commissions. A, Community Services Board of March 27th. B, Economic Development Corporation of March 13th. C, Planning Commission of January 25th. D, Planning Commission of February 22nd. E, Planning Commission of March 22nd. And F, Tax Increment Finance Authority III of February 13th. Recommended action is to accept the minutes of the various boards and commissions. Item B, Communications. One, from the Ordinance Evaluation Committee, review of Chapters 15 through 17. Recommended action is to direct city administration to draft necessary ordinances which would enact presented changes to Chapter 15 and Chapter 16 of the City Assu St. Marie Codified Ordinance and return this matter to the City Commission at a future meeting for further action.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a commissioner that has a question on the consent agenda? If not, Commissioner Twardy.
I so move that we approve the consent agenda.
Support. It is moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Bospis.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item three, Special Orders of Business. A, Submission of the City Manager's Recommended Budget for the 2018-2019 fiscal year and the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
Okay, thank you very much. City Manager Turner.
Thank you, Your Honor. As Commissioners are aware, Section 8.2 of the City Charter provides that the City Manager will submit a budget to the City Commission on a third Monday in April of each year. Upon the receipt of the City Manager's proposed budget, the City Commission has traditionally reviewed the budget during at least one work session. For 2018, the dates of Tuesday, April 17th, Wednesday, the 18th, and Thursday, April 19th have been chosen for these work sessions, with the Wednesday and Thursday dates being held only if needed. All work sessions are scheduled to start at 4:15 PM on these dates. So the first work session is scheduled for tomorrow afternoon at 4:15 PM in the City Commission chambers. Following the work sessions, the City Commission will meet on Monday, April 23rd, at 4:15 PM to reconcile any modifications to the recommended budget which are suggested during the budget work sessions. Thereafter, the City Commission would take action at its May 7th regular meeting to formally introduce and propose the reconciled budget for adoption. During its May 7th meeting, the Commission would also take action to schedule public hearings for the May 21st meeting, during which time public comments would be received on the budget, and after which the Commission may formally adopt the budget for the fiscal year running from July 1st, 2018, through June 30, 2019. Distributed budgeted materials include detailed budget worksheets for all of the city's operating funds, details for all capital equipment purchases, details for capital project requests, and proposed water and sewer rates. The associated budget message will be distributed to the Commission and public by Monday, May 7th. City administration appreciates the time devoted by the members of the City Commission to the budget development and adoption process, as well as the time dedicated by Mr. Bill Munsel, former City Commissioner, as well as those department heads engaged in the process, and Finance Director and Treasurer Kristin Collins. Accordingly, there are two recommendations. The first, that the City Commission formally receive the City Manager's proposed budget, and secondarily, that the City Commission confirm the budget work session dates, as well as the date for the special meeting of reconciliation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And there are two recommendations in discussion with the City Attorney, that could be one motion. Commissioner Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to formally receive the City Manager's proposed budget and to confirm the budget work sessions as outlined in the City Commissioner's memo.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Bospis.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Item B, under Special Orders of Business, is public hearing on confirmation of special assessment role for sidewalk construction on the I-75 Business Spur from 10th Avenue to the Three Mile Road Roundabout, Project SW-01-18.
Okay, thank you very much. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, I've requested that City Engineer Basista present to the City Commission and community.
Excellent. Evening, Lynda.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. At the February 5th meeting, you held a public hearing of necessity for the sidewalks to be installed along on the east side of I-75 Business Spur during the MDOT reconstruction of the spur from the northbound ramps to 10th Avenue. Later, you approved the resolution approving the necessity of the project, and subsequently bids were received from MDOT, and the actual cost of the sidewalks is now known. And so the public hearing, which is tonight, public hearing to set the role, was where you adopt the role and you approved the assessments to the adjoining property owners. The cost, based on the bids, has come down significantly from the estimate. Of course, I estimated high, just so, you know, don't want to estimate low and then have it come out high, but really good prices. So the property owners, in sharing 50% of the cost for the sidewalk, which includes the sand subbase, will be paying $1.62 for four-inch and $2.13 for six-inch concrete. And the assessments generally range from, the lowest is $222 to one that is $3,600, but that's along a gas station, maybe Holiday, I don't know which one exactly. The average or typical assessment is around $1,100. So we anticipate that the construction will begin, kind of hoped in May, maybe June, July, no, I don't, as soon as possible, the construction will start. And so tonight, I would ask that you conduct the public hearing, allowing property owners to speak on their assessment. Now, it's not about the need of the project, it is about the amount of the assessment, and then subsequently adopt the role, which then would be invoiced after the construction is completed.
Any questions?
And there's a resolution in your packet.
Okay, any questions of Lynda, Commissioner? City Manager.
Appreciate the presentation by the City Engineer. Just two notes for the City Commission. The first is that special assessments could be paid over a period of 10 years at the interest rate of 5.75% in accordance with the City Commission's established, newly established policy on special assessment interest rates.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, if there are no questions at this time, we'll hold the public hearing on the special assessment role for the proposed sidewalk project, SW-01-18. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment at this time? Again, it's along the Business Spur, primarily on the east side, going north and south. Hearing none, we will move to the City Commission. Commissioner Talantino.
I so move that we adopt the resolution.
Confirming the special assessment role, SW-0118.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Bospis.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item C, under Special Orders of Business, is adoption of an ordinance amending a payment in lieu of tax ordinance previously approved for the proposed Osborne Commons project.
Okay, thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As Commissioners are aware, Mr. Craig Patterson with the WODA Group has approached the city with the request that the city amend the duly adopted payment in lieu of taxes ordinance for the proposed Osborne Commons development that a majority of the Commission approved in March 2017. A communication dated January 29th, 2018, from Mr. Patterson outlining this request has been included. Specifically, this communication requests that the city amend the ordinance to extend its duration by roughly one year. The WODA Group has not, to date, received approval from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority for low-income housing tax credit financing for the proposed Osborne Commons development. The WODA Group, however, was encouraged by scoring on its most recently scored application. Concurrently, Mr. Patterson is concerned that even if MISTHA were to approve the financing, that a delay in this being awarded could cause construction to commence at a time that would not meet the requirements of the existing ordinance. Under the existing language, the WODA Group would have until March 20th, 2019, for the development to commence. Extending the period of time within which this could commence could address the concerns of the WODA Group. Significant information relating to this request was included in the agenda packet for the February 5th regular meeting of the City Commission and can be provided upon request to any Commissioner or member of the public. Additional project-related information, including the previously prepared market study produced by the WODA Group and access to previously prepared financial information, has also been distributed to the City Commission. As Commissioners are aware, a majority of the Commission, on a four-to-three vote, took action during the February 5th meeting to instruct city administration to prepare an ammendatory ordinance extending the timeframe for rehabilitation commencement and to return the matter to a future City Commission meeting. Thereafter, a majority of the City Commission, on a four-to-three vote, took action during the February 19th meeting to hold a first reading of the proposed ammendatory ordinance as drafted by the City Attorney. Additionally, the City Commission considered the adoption of the ammendatory ordinance during its March 19th meeting, after which the adoption of the ordinance received a tie vote on a three-to-three vote, resulting in no action occurring. As well, Mr. Craig Patterson presented to the Commission during its April 2nd meeting regarding a change in the scope of the development. Accordingly, the next action on the proposed ammendatory ordinance may be for the City Commission to adopt the ammendatory ordinance. As detailed previously, the process to amend an ordinance requires both a first reading, as well as a second reading, and action to adopt. Finally, it should be noted that the ammendatory ordinance drafted by the City Attorney would extend the period of time within which construction could start to February 19th, 2020. Accordingly, my recommendation would be that the City Commission adopt the presented ammendatory ordinance, or in the alternative, reject the proposed ammendatory ordinance, or another course as directed by the City Commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And there is a gentleman, David Bolson, would like to speak at this time? Sure, please, that way the folks who are listening at home.
Hello. I wasn't aware that this ordinance had gone as far as it had. I just happened to catch it in the newspaper and worked into my schedule to show up to bring probably the silent majority's point of view to your desk. The issue to me is, do we want development downtown in that, what I'll call the Ganshorn Parking Lot? And the answer is yes. Is this a good proposal? It's okay. It's not, is that the only one on the table, so it's the best we can get. But do I want one set of taxpayers that are going to develop in the city treated differently than somebody else and carve out a special tax program called a dividend in lieu of taxes? The answer is no, I don't like that. I think that we're all in this together, we're all on a level playing field, or should be, and that any time we adopt an ordinance that carves out special treatment for somebody, a developer, because they're allegedly improving the city, we've made a mistake. And the reason I think we've made a mistake is that if the development is so valuable to us, then why is it that we are carving out special treatment for them? If this is not a profitable venture, then don't do it. If the developer needs the city taxpayers, me, the properties that I own, to help fund him or his project, to have a dividend in lieu of paying taxes at the same rate that I pay, then it's not, in my mind, a viable project that should ever have been a, it's not a viable project. The City Commission, of course, can do these things, and I'm just one taxpayer, but I think if anybody's listening on cable TV that they agree with me, I hope they'll send you guys a letter, because you also have the power to repeal the ordinance. So it sounds like today, the issue is, are you going to extend it for another year to give them another year of time to begin construction? And because I oppose the very concept of a dividend in lieu of taxes, I'm asking you not to do that, not because I don't want the development, I do want the development. I just want the playing field to be level where we're all paying the same taxes and there's no special carve-outs. If it's not a good deal without the tax, special tax treatment, then it's not a good deal. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Anybody want to quiz me on my point of view?
Thank you. Thanks, David. At this time, Craig Patterson is here with the WODA Group. You might have some additional information, and then we can go to the Commission.
Mayor, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Osborne Commons. When I was here two weeks ago, I gave an update on the change in scope, which I hope was received. It's a very strong positive, the ability for us to reach out beyond where we were.
Could you go over that again, because some Commissioners weren't here, at least one.
Okay. That scope includes an increase in investment to 13.66 million, hard construction of nearly 9.5 million, and it includes the incorporation of 12 units at an income cap of 80% area median income. What that does is means, instead of capping out at 60% AMI area median income, that means that more individuals that have higher income can come and live at Osborne Commons. At the same time, it means that we still are maintaining the two market rate units, which have no income cap, so a total of 14 units that are above the 60% AMI that normally is associated with a low to moderate income tax credit deal like Osborne Commons. That means, a family of two in a two-bedroom, the income lifts higher by roughly 11,000 per year, I think it's 11,600 per year, over a 60% AMI household with two members in the household. I think that's a strong positive, not just for your community, but I think throughout the state of Michigan, or communities wherever we go, whether it's me or competitors like us, say, there's a missing middle. There's a group of people who cannot qualify, and yet they're in our downtowns, they're working, they want to live here, they're seniors who may want to give up a house that they've owned for years and have safe, affordable, downtown walkable, but the income caps are too low. So that's pretty much what I went through the last time I was here. The pilot doesn't change, we still give you an MSA, but the incremental, the net result of higher incomes on the light tax side, the tax credit side, with 80% rents, higher rents, that means there'll be more net that comes to the pile. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Did you speak also of the commercial area and the ad lorum at 100%?
Well, the commercial area, as you may remember, facing Osborne Street at the corner Maloney and Osborne, is 1,920 square feet of commercial, which we would rent at market rate, whatever the market bears, and then it would be taxed, my understanding, like other market rate commercial downtown.
Yeah, a plus. Okay, thank you. Questions of Mr. Patterson? Anyone? Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
And let me just say a couple of things. This is not a unique project. We have several projects in the community. They generate about, I believe, the information we have somewhere between 70 and 80,000 dollars between the six or seven entities that we have pilots in the community. So it's not something new. I think the new thing about it is the 80% AMI, which someone in the state or the federal level is listening to, market rate, and 80% goes quite a bit more than the 60%. So more people would be eligible. I think we have a lot of people working in the downtown area that would like to take advantage of nice, affordable apartments, for the working, primarily working middle-class to not such middle-class. But these people are all working, they have to work in order to maintain the rents out of there. And I think overall, I've changed my mind on the project, and initially I voted no because I thought the market rate units were something that we all agree that we need. But as a first project in a vacant property that's been vacant for over 30 years, these are only people stepping forward. And we found with Avery Square, Avery Center, if you build in the downtown, others will come when they see the success that's going on, and you create more population in those bases. So I think all in all, it's a win for the city when you look at 13-point-some-million-dollar project and the amount of taxes that will be there in perpetuity. And the only project that is paying a management or services fee going forward, and the only project I know of that is that 80%. I know Avery Square is at 100% market, at about 29 units, and 28 units are 60% going and going down, so should be a good project. Commissioner Gary.
I just had a couple of comments, but before that, I have a disclaimer. I work for USDA Rural Development. We have a multifamily housing program that finances rental and provides rental assistance to 67 properties in the U.P., 1,920 units, actually 18 counties. And WODA is a customer of ours, they have seven properties in our portfolio. On March 21st, after our three-three votes, and I think it was a couple days after, Mr. Patterson had reached out to say that there is a possibility they may apply for a 538 guaranteed loan, which is gap financing, and it would be after all of this approval is done, and I do not have any approval authority that goes directly to the National Office for approval and oversight. I did call the City Attorney, and he concurred that I can and must vote, and I wanted to get his verbal concurrence opinion here, please.
City Attorney.
That is correct. You have no financial interest in the matter before the Commission.
Okay. Now, just a couple of comments I had, because there's been a lot of hubbub on social media about this vote, and I just wanted to clarify a couple of incorrect statements and maybe some rumors. And I think, as was noted, this pilot was already approved, and we're here tonight to vote on an extension of 12 months because he's going for his third attempt at financing through MISTHA. I wanted to point out to everybody, this is a goal of the city. Goal number B3 was support the redevelopment of the Maloney's Alley vicinity, and so we just went through a goal-setting session in February, and that was a restated goal that we had. This is an arms-like transaction, willing seller and buyer. The city is not involved in the transaction itself. They are abiding by all our zoning ordinances, and they are complying with our pilot ordinance, which has been in effect for a very long time. One of the goals that was introduced, a goal-setting, was to revisit our pilot ordinance, but it did not get enough votes by the Commission to go back to it, so I don't think there was enough will to change what is in effect and has been our ordinance for a long time. WODA does own property in the Sioux already, they have a nice property that was rehabbed a few years back and managed that well. And I think uniquely, this property, the WODA Company, which is a very large company, has offered a corporate guarantee of these pilot payments, which is something we have never asked one of the developers to do. So we have nine other pilots, we've never asked them to do that. So they were willing to do that, and the guarantee was pretty sweeping, and I think that shows some nobility on their part. On March 22nd, 2018, the Planning and Development Committee gave unanimous approval to conditionally approve the site plan for the WODA Group's venture. And there was a regional planner who works for regional planning on that board, and she thanked Craig Patterson for coming, and she noted, I quote, "It meets so many goals for this city and this region." So in the social media, there were some comments about Eskenaba being turned down. Well, the Planning Commission turned it down because of the historic nature of that, and from what I see online, they have a appeal hearing on April 24th and may be victorious in that. So the Commission did not see that it was a planning commission on their site plan because they were rehabbing an existing building, I understand, or there were some shipo concerns?
There was shipo concern on how we would build the building, and then there was confusion of whether it was true or mis-saw.
So it wasn't just purely the Commission said, "We don't want that development in town." This was planning commission. On the property option, I think that WODA's had it for a couple of years now, and there have been zero inquiries in the last two years, and the property's been vacant for 25 or more years. People said that, you know, "Why doesn't the Commission focus on jobs?" Well, we are focusing on jobs. We have focused in our goals on jobs, and this development will bring 97 construction jobs to the area. And WODA, I think, in his, one of his statements said, "32 of 37 subs," or something like that, "in Traverse City were local." And they'll also source local materials, which is cement, you know, hardboard, and some of the other things. So that is jobs. People had said, "No taxes." Well, I took a look at this list of all of our nine pilots, and if you dissect it, because of the municipal services agreement, this WODA project will actually pay more in pilot than Sioux Housing does, and it will pay more than most of the other developments. And on a per-unit basis, it's much higher. Wrong location, well, this sale is a transaction between a seller and a buyer. We're not to determine the exact location. They had a study done. We had done, I think, through the DDA, we had done some charrettes, and we had done some studies to try to see what the highest best use of that property would be, and then we did a solicitation, investment opportunity, and from what I understand, nothing came of that. We have no investors. And ironically, that picture looks kind of like this picture, which is the investment opportunity that's come forward to us. So I think this does fit in line with a lot of the goals that the city set, and is, it's a good opportunity for us. And like I said, $9 million worth of construction materials sourced locally, 97 jobs. So I support it, and I thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, kind of a spin-off of Commissioner Gary. I also wanted to make a few comments about why I am voting for the WODA project. Again, as Commissioner Gary said, the social media was pretty crazy. From what I saw, a lot of misinformed information, and I encourage everybody, instead of reaching out to Facebook for their information, to reach out to one of us, or really research the information before putting it all out there. One thing, we, yes, market rate is obviously needed, however, I don't believe any market rate would build a complex like that in a parking lot. I feel like market rate would focus on waterfront development with this, and this will affect me personally quite a bit with my business being right there and for parking. However, after going to the meeting that WODA held at the Ojibwe and answering, asking, I think, close to 40, 50 questions myself, I found out, one, with as far as parking goes, they're willing to possibly, depending on how many spaces they have available, offer spaces to businesses for their employees downtown. Yeah, they don't want people coming in and out, but they're willing to let somebody, an employee, park there for an eight-hour shift, which I feel like that's very good faith in helping us down there. Also, on Facebook, I saw that the people were saying Park Place and West Pier, and everyone was full. Well, we called, and that they had spaces available, and we called, and they're completely full. There's one available apartment in Park Place, and that is reserved specifically for the Diane Pepler Center. In regards to it not being a perfect space, as Commissioner Gary says, that's not for us to determine. However, I can personally say, with the staff that I have at my business, half of them can't afford cars. If they do, they break down all the time, their kids go to community action, it might not be perfect. It might not be perfect for your family, but for their family, when they're working downtown, their kids go to school downtown and they can't afford a car, this would be a perfect option for them. Again, the tax capture that we will be getting will, is immensely more than what we're gaining now. And if for some reason the sale does fall through, as most people know, the DDA's just been maintaining and, and we've been using it from the owner, I don't see him allowing public use of that for parking anymore if this deal does fall through. So in my opinion, regardless when it comes to parking, we're losing it anyway. I think this kind of a development, again, will encourage more developers to come in. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Twardy?
Thank you. I wasn't really going to say anything because we've talked about this so many times. And yeah, social media over the last week was, it was pretty crazy. And I do wish that people would reach out and always ask questions so that you can get the, the correct information. There's a couple of reasons why I'm not supporting the project and it has nothing to do with the, the private sale that goes on between the current owner and WODA. Has a lot to do with the, with how many publicly funded projects are going to continue happening with, not only within the state of Michigan, but within the country. And so at a minimum, I'm assuming, and I didn't ask Craig this, but I'm assuming that this is going to be about seventy-five percent publicly funded. So that means that your Michigan State tax dollars will go towards the funding of the building of the thirteen million dollar project. Potentially, at the end of it, WODA could end up with about a maximum of four million dollars left over that they may owe. And at the end of the year, their gross rent could be two-point-eight million dollars plus commercial space. And so the reason that I'm against the pilot, there are a few things that I, reasons I'm against the pilot. I think we're already pilot saturated. I think this pilot specifically, with it having to be ninety-three percent full before we can capture the three percent, I think that's pretty low. So they would only have to have two vacant units in order to fall below that ninety-three percent full in order to not have to pay any pilot whatsoever. And three percent is pretty low. Sioux Housing pays ten percent. I know that Park Place City Center pays five percent and most of the other piloted projects within the community pay within four and five percent. So three is pretty low. It's about a nine thousand dollar tax capture and that's if they're at the ninety-three percent full. So I do think it's nice that they added in the fifteen thousand MSA. It does kind of make up some of that loss, but I'm still going to be voting no for this because I, I do believe that we are pilot saturated within the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of comment, I'd like to have Craig Patterson come back up because I think the information being passed out isn't totally accurate. MISTDA is not a public entity. It's a, they work with private banks so that we're not using any tax dollars, as I understand it. Craig?
Well, let me explain a little bit further because it sometimes can get a little confusing. MISTDA is the pass-through organization within state Michigan to pass through housing tax credits that are issued by the federal government to every state based on population. This is a Reagan plan that was approved in nineteen eighty-six. It's section forty-two IRS code, which developed this whole program in order to allow the private sector to invest in communities throughout the United States in order to assure that there was new construction or the preservation of existing construction, like the deal that Commissioner Gary mentioned up on Meridian. Those, those tax credits are given to MISTDA. MISTDA then comes up with a scoring mechanism, an application process, to make sure that certain things are not violated, like fair housing, like no special deals, like certain pro formas, underwriting, that assures that the deal will stay, will be able to sustain through the fifteen years of tax credit compliance. It is local banks or national banks or syndicators that buy these tax credits in order to comply what's called the Community Reinvestment Act. So you have banks in this community like Huntington and I don't know all the banks. I think PNC is here. Other banks like that consistently buy these credits in order to meet their CRA needs. So sometimes it gets a little confused with other programs. There are, there are some direct lending programs that MISTDA monitors with funds that come out of the state, but these credits strictly come from the IRS, from the feds. The second thing I, I wanted to mention was on the pilot itself. The pilot will be paid irrespective of the occupancy. It is paid. What we did was we said that if there is a ninety-three percent occupancy, then you can count on so much money coming in from the pilot at a three percent pilot. If it's a hundred percent, it's higher. So it never, you'll always get a pilot program. Throughout the fifteen states that we occupy and have housing developments, our portfolio averages ninety-seven point two percent across fifteen states. So in the state of Michigan, we're always ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. So I think that may answer the questions. I might have missed something. Lastly, there was a comment made from the audience about this being special for a developer and shouldn't the playing field be evened out? Well, the statute which allows a municipality like this to grant a pilot is granted only, the statute only is for tax credit deals like this, where we covenant for fifteen years, it goes, it's recorded along with the deed, that we will maintain those rents, those lower rents that, and we cannot raise them without getting approval. So the statute provides for that and that was done in nineteen sixty-six in order to stimulate this type of development, this type of housing.
Is that to provide fair housing for those that may not be able to afford the market? So that people have decent and affordable housing?
Well, that's part of it, but what the state recognized in order to see that type of development throughout the state, whether it's Detroit, Sioux St. Marie, or Morenci, a small community in Lenawee County, that the only way you can assure that there's stability in the taxation, that you know every year how much it's going to be, you've got to, because the number-one expense in a deal like this, the number-one operating expense is our taxes. So our investors want to see pilots. We get scoring points for the pilot that then wins the funding and it just makes good business sense to have this predictability throughout the fifteen years.
Question, Commissioner, let's go to Commissioner Collins and then we'll go to Commissioner.
I just wanted to ask on the, the corporate guarantee of payments. So realistically, even if you only had eighty percent occupancy, the city's still going to get paid?
Going to get paid. The part of the reason the guarantee went in there was because of the MSA. What if the MSA wasn't paid? We could have paid the three percent pilot, but that big number, the fifteen thousand that goes direct into your, in your coffers, it was, it was suggested that the guarantee be there just to make sure. So, and we signed it and agreed.
Thank you. Commissioner Gary?
And you made a great point, Mr. Mayor and, and Mr. Patterson, about the tax credits and I wish they were called something different, but this type of financing is not direct money from the government, period. This is private investors, banks, insurance companies, other conglomerates, that are putting their money into it in exchange for some favorable tax rate. So in essence, yes, they do get a little bit from the government, but it's not on a dollar-for-dollar basis. So this is their way of, and as you said, banks are required to do community reinvestment, which is investing in, in depressed areas and, and other areas. So this is not direct government money. This is investors, this is part of the overall investment scheme in America. And these are investors, almost like bonds, and they're getting tax, credit on their taxes. I mean, it's a good point to say it's not direct investment from the government.
Okay? Commissioner Collins?
So are the, so the tax credits actually go to the banks then?
The credits go to whoever purchased them, the buyer, the investor.
Investor. It could be a bank, it could be an insurance company, it could be a syndicator that's brought a bunch of investors together and they prorate out the tax benefit of that.
So when they say tax credits, basically it's the investors that are getting the tax credit?
Right.
That's where the terminology came from?
That's where it came from.
Thank you.
Anyone else? And as you can see, and Community Action spent twelve years investing into something like this, and it's not an easy target to hit. And you have bumps in the road and you think you're here and you're down here and it keeps on going, but these projects are not easy. And WODA has to be given at least a lot of credibility to be in the business because there are people that do this, but you know, because you, once you've done a number of projects, then you know some of the hoops, but they're very difficult to, to do. But the, the Community Reinvestment Act and the, the credits do work in communities. And we, we all know we want market rate units and hopefully that, those entities will come once they see favorable projects and, and Commissioner working together to make things better for everybody. And that includes additional population as, as jobs happen, so.
One thing, one other thing, excuse me, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Twardy?
Can, can you clarify one more thing? I, I don't think that the eighty percent AMI has actually been approved.
Well, it has been approved at MISTDA's level. The, the tax credit bill was signed by Trump that allowed this to happen. Before we changed and submitted our application, we went to MISTDA to the highest levels because it was one, was one and a half weeks before application that the signature was, I mean, the whole change was made by Trump. And so then we went to MISTDA, make sure, there are some states that still not sure, they're still not sure how they're going to do this, but we went and we got the confirmation and we changed our pro formas and everything accordingly.
Okay. That's what was my question, because if the eighty percent AMI isn't officially approved, what's going to happen to those twelve, fourteen units that are priced at eighty percent?
Well, let's say a hypothetical, if it were, they would go to the sixty percent, I presume, but we are confident they are approved. And not only that, but we know that there, we've heard of other savvy developers who were able to get, get it in at the last minute, but I think we were the ones to make the first call. And partly the reason why was because of you all. Can I say you all up this far north?
Yeah.
So because you, Mayor, and others insisted on a wider net if you can, and I said, "I wish I could, I can't do more than two market rates." So the minute this hit, I, I called the owners and I said, "Can we do this? Is there a chance we can do this in the Sioux?" So.
Well, we thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Any other comments? City Manager, anything?
Nothing further. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Collins? Would you like to make a motion to approve the?
Well, as soon as I get it.
Sure.
Make the motion to that the city commission adopt the presented mandatory ordinance.
Support.
Move support. Are there any additional questions or comments? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Talantino?
No.
Commissioner Twardy?
No.
Mayor Vasmus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item D under Special Orders of Business, a second reading of an ordinance to rezone the easterly sixty-two feet of Lot one sixty-six, Assessor Subdivision Number Three, one-on-one North Ashman Street, from RM one multifamily residential to B two central business district and refer the deposition of the alley back to city administration for further review.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, I've requested that Community Development Director Freeman present to the commission.
Evening, Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So the city commission last saw this item on March nineteenth. Nuisance then, and it's included in your packet, HPH's legal counsel sent a letter that basically states that it's his opinion based upon a few Michigan Supreme Court cases that a court case would likely find that HPH has the authority to trump local zoning. Community mental health organizations are empowered by statute to, among other things, acquire and operate real estate. The two Supreme Court cases dealt with, in one case a county, in another case a school district. I believe in those cases, they're granted that same ability, but it's less explicit. And his argument is that if it ever went to court, more than likely, they would find in favor of the community mental health, our community mental health organizations. And it's based on that advice that HPH closed on the property last month, so Judith Old is no longer parted at the application. And additionally, one change since the last meeting was the recommendation, we've made a correction or a change to that, to refer the alley matter back to administration. So properties located one-on-one North Ashman, at the intersection of Ashman and Water Street, there's a hundred and fifty-two feet of frontage on Water and a hundred and sixteen on Ashman. Building is about fourteen hundred square feet, was built in right around late nineteen twenties, early nineteen thirties, and was operated as a gas station until the late nineteen sixties. After that, it transitioned to retail uses and in nineteen seventy-three, that is when Judith Olden, her husband John, purchased the building and from that location, they ran the old insurance agency until the late nineteen nineties. With that closed, it was a number of commercial ventures since then, most recently the seven-twenty-seventh School of Cosmetology. Mrs. Old wanted to sell the building and HPH assumed ownership of the property in late March. Presently, as it stands, the west ninety-two feet of the property is zone B two, which is a central business district designation. The remainder, which is the east sixty-two feet, is RM one, which is multiple family. So they are requesting that the eastern sixty-two feet be rezoned from RM one to B two so that the property would be uniformly zoned B two. Here you can see the area that this request would apply to. So as we've discussed before, the zoning history indicates that the split has always been there since nineteen twenty-seven, at least when zoning was established in the city. The western one hundred feet of Lot one sixty-six was assigned a business zoning designation. While the remainder was the multiple family equivalent at the time of the C district. One thing that I did add to this presentation that wasn't in previous versions, Lot sixty-six has existed in its current dimensional form since nineteen twenty-five, so the configuration of that property predates the drawing of the zoning lines. So whenever that occurred, you know, back in nineteen twenty-seven, finding information was a little less convenient than it is now, so more than likely, you just said it was a hundred feet rather than going through and finding the actual property lines and using that as the demarcation. Here you can see the nineteen twenty-seven zoning map showing the one-hundred-foot mark. And here's the current zoning map showing the same area. So it's not known exactly why this, this issue has never been corrected. More than likely, it was just simply a lack of information or, you know, today with computers, we can find out things much more quickly than you could back in the day when you had to go through books and, and whatnot. Parceling property lands weren't actually added permanently to the zoning map until the mid-two thousands, so between nineteen seventy-four, I think, and two thousand and five, this was what our zoning map looked like. You can see the block in question here in relationship to the size of a penny, you can cover the whole block with a penny, so it's hard to say with any degree of certainty where this line lies on the ground. Back in two thousand and thirteen, we came to the electronic conversion and that change exposed a lot of these situations throughout the city. I believe there's on the order of four hundred parcels that are split zoned, like there's some more severe than others. Regardless of how it happened, commercial activities occurring in residentially zoned properties, that's technically a violation of zoning ordinance. So in terms of the wisdom of this change, we always look to the master plan to see what that says. In that case, it shows this property being within the central business district, featuring land use designation, which is consistent with the central business district B two zoning designation. Additionally, the majority of the property is zoned B two and we have a hundred and thirty-plus years of historical non-residential use of this property. I tried to touch this picture up a little bit, make it a little more visible from the last meeting. You can see Water Street, this is from, I believe, eighteen eighty. Water Street here in the foreground, you can see Ashman coming down here, although there's houses in this section of it. This church stands where the old courthouse annex building is, for reference, in the county courthouse.
Did you say that again, Kelly, Craig?
This church right here, where you can, I'm circling with a mouse.
Yeah, I see the church.
Yep, that is where the courthouse annex building stands today. And this predates, obviously, the construction of the county courthouse and that, obviously, is just right across the street. This upper, or this, this larger portion of the hotel here, I believe, sits roughly where Lambros's apartments are today. This upper, or this larger portion of the hotel here, I believe, sits roughly where Lambros's apartments are today. The alley kind of punches through right here, and then the remainder is our subject property. You can kind of see a rendering from the same vantage point, or as close as I could get to it, showing the current conditions. Here is a copy of the future land use map, you can see the block in question circled in blue, showing the central business district future land use designation. For a number of reasons, split zonings are often undesirable. They add a lot of confusion as to a property and how it can be used, especially in a case like this where it passes through a building. There's about 240-some square feet of it that's residential, clips off the back corner. Oftentimes, these complicate property transactions, we've seen it before. Banks want a letter from me that says that this property can be used for that purpose, and they're not comfortable putting their money in until they have that in their hands. And oftentimes, you follow a, you know, a rezoning. I know we did one within the last year, year and a half, I believe, for Lake Superior Estates Mobile Home Park. Additionally, with different zoning designations, you have different setbacks, different building heights, different uses, so there's really no compelling reason for the RM1 district to remain in place on this property. Additionally, the property's been administered for the last 90 years by the city as if it were 100% zoned commercial. I could find no evidence that we made any attempt to section off that portion of the property and treated any different than the remainder that was already Zoned B2. It's been continuously taxed at the commercial tax rate. So the rezoning that's being requested will align the zoning map with how the property has been used for the last 90 years in a commercial fashion. Planning Commission met to consider this item on February 22nd. There were three main concerns, first of all, the disposition of the alley, the proposed use by HPH, and the physical neighborhood character moving on in the future. The alley, which you can see here in orange, is actually on property that HPH owns. That's never been public, and has been that way since at least 1954, which are the oldest areas that we have in our inventory. Right now, the Lambroses plow that, however, the city has maintained the road service in the past. There'd be no issue with the DPW maintaining if we took it, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there in the future. Additionally, there was concern regarding HPH's plans for the property. And it's important to bear in mind that the application has to be decided on its merits, not who's asking for it, or what they might do with it. Provided they comply with the requirements of the zoning, they're free to do as they please of the property, just like any other private property owner in the city. Additionally, there was one couple who expressed that they would see this foreshadowing the spread of commercial zoning down Water Street and the eventual demolition of the homes. Currently, the property down there is Zoned RM1, which is a multi-family designation. It would need to be changed by the commission before any commercial activity could take place there. And I don't foresee staff support, at least as long as I'm sitting in the chair I'm in. So the Planning Commission approved the recommendation 5 to 0 after the discussion. So the recommendation before the city commission tonight is to receive public input, approve the second reading as presented, and refer the matter of the alley back to administration, which would be a separate motion. We will reappear as soon as we have a direction forward that we can recommend on that.
Thank you, Kelly, are there any questions of Kelly, well, Commissioner Talantino?
Kelly, thank you very much for the presentation. I just got a question on that, why are all the other property lines straight? And this one's got kind of a crook in it that goes through that apartment. Is that apartment complex on that property?
I believe it's very close. With aerials, it's always difficult to get a shot from straight down, so you're always looking at a building from one angle or another, but it's probably close.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Freeman? City manager, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Freeman. Just to reiterate, there would be three actions that the city commission could take on us. The first would be to receive public comment on the subject matter. The second would be to approve and adopt the proposed ordinance. And the third would be to refer the disposition of the alley back to city administration for further review. Just to reiterate my appreciation to the Planning Commission for its very thorough review of this. Certainly, there are very technical elements, which staff and Planning Commission tend to zero in on, as shown by the presentation, that the proposed rezoning is in line with the master plan, that split zonings can complicate building construction and possible future uses. And with the concerns, over erosion of the historic residential Water Street seems to not be a very likely outcome, at least in the immediate future. So certainly appreciate the presentation and diligence.
Okay, thank you. So, Commissioner Collins? Before we go to question, we're going to do a public comment first, and then we'll go to the commission?
Sure.
Do you hold till then?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Okay, at this time, anyone that would like to speak on the proposed project or the proposed ordinance, come forward, if you'd like. Okay, hearing done, now we'll go to Commissioner Collins.
Sorry, I actually had a question for Kelly.
Okay.
So it's my understanding that HPH is the current owner, correct?
That's correct.
And they can actually do exactly what they want to do in the current state, even if we don't pass the rezoning, correct?
Based upon their lawyer's interpretation of the previous court cases, more than likely, that if this were to proceed to court, that it would be a favorable decision for them.
Well, what I mean by that is we've had commercial usage in that building, and it has been Zoned residential, and we've never done anything about it in the past. So if, my understanding is the only reason that they were even coming in to get it rezoned is because their lender wanted to make sure that it was owned all commercial before they would give them the money.
That's basically correct.
And we've never stopped anybody else from using the building commercial?
That's also correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, city commission. Commissioner Gary?
I make a motion that we approve and adopt the proposed ordinance.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, are there any questions? I will say that initially, I voted against the proposal because of the, I thought the buffer was something that was important, and it's been that way for, well, now that we know since 1925. And people have used it, and they could still sell it, and they did, and HPH has it. Justin Nepper has talked to the owners, current owners, which would be HPH. And I like Justin, he used to share his, what he had found out that, they are willing, as I understand, and I wanted to make sure this comment was at least in the record. And Justin says it a lot better than I do, so I'll ask him to do that. But there are some possibilities that, given the fact, if we could get development on the street, which would make it continue the historic nature, you know, the city's, come on up here, Justin. Spend an awful lot of time and, and staff time and grant monies and stuff to make that historic Water Street, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I personally was really hopeful that Hiawatha Behavioral Health would be able to find us a location that would be closer to the hospital and closer to other services, that were in line with the folks that would be using that space. And it was a little bit of a surprise to me when they located that building and began kind of going down that path. And it did make a lot of sense in terms of their use and how easy that building is to be remodeled and reused, and the parking that's involved, and so on and so forth. So it makes a lot of sense, you know, for their use. One of the things that I personally was interested in as a downtown developer is the long-term development that will take place in our community. And one thing that I talked to Mr. McKinnon about, the director of HPH, was if the locks projects were to happen in the next five years, 10 years, 15 years, or if somehow or another, there was a, other developments that came along. Water Street, as we saw in the historic photo, used to be where there were hotels and buildings along the water there. And, you know, someday in the future, perhaps where the Ramado Gibway owns the parking lot along Water Street, Madigan Pingator, HPH, those are all buildings that are not fully utilizing, in terms of the square footage, the ability to, you know, take up the full use of our only real waterfrontage downtown. So I did talk to Mr., to Mr. McKinnon from HPH about, let's say, something comes along, would they be willing to have discussions with us and partner with the community and with the city on future use, future upgrades of those sites? And perhaps relocate, perhaps relocate if something comes along. We don't have, of course, anything in the hopper, if you will. But he did express interest, or willingness to engage with us if that ever comes up, and to work with us on perhaps relocating down the road. So I did leave a message with him today about perhaps getting something in writing, which I haven't gotten back in touch with, but I think in the short term, it'll be really good to work with HPH again downtown, and we'll do our best to make sure that they do well on that site.
And that changed my mind, and I think if he's willing to do that, and they're actually willing to sign something, that's, would be, it would be good, because they don't stay, you know, they change directorships. But going forward, at least we'd have that, if we had such a significant project, that they, the city might have to help find them another spot, but ultimately, we could continue to hopefully build on that if it ever occurred. So just for your information, Commissioner Baker?
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment as far as the clubhouse that HPH is proposing and putting in. I think it'll be good for our downtown community, downtown community. There's a lot of HPH's patients that are living in our downtown community. So having them have access to a space that's not all the way up past M29 would be helpful, and to help them integrate them into the downtown community as well, maybe help them get jobs and things like that. So I think it's a positive thing for downtown.
Commissioner Talantino?
Sorry about that. It's been also brought to my attention that we have numerous other properties that are really close to this vicinity that do have some issues as far as zoning. I hope we, as a city, are addressing those now. I hope we're not going to wait till the sale of the property. I think we could alleviate a lot of this issue right here, if we do address those. So I'm hoping that administration is starting to look at those. I believe we should do it before instead of after. We won't have none of these, none of these issues.
And I just got one comment. HPH left the downtown to go to past 3-mile, where it's very difficult for their, and we talked about that. When they did, we tried to keep them in the downtown. It's nice to see them coming back to the downtown. So I will give them that one kudo, but it's nice to see that they are being part of the community again. I never thought that was a good location, where it ended up, people have to drive in cars, and the buses don't go there. It's just very difficult for their clientele to get there. And they pulled a lot of professional folks out of our downtown, and they were a significant impact, along with DHS at the time, so, just a comment. Anything, anyone else? Commissioner Gary?
So to Commissioner Talantino's point, did I hear you say 400 split zoning issues?
Plus or minus.
Whoa.
In the block immediately to the east, I know there are, there are eight.
Okay, Commissioner Talantino?
We better get on it.
Commissioner Gary?
And did I need to add the refer the disposition of the alley on to my motion? Or was that a second motion?
City manager?
That would be a separate motion.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor, any questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Basmus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried, second, Commissioner Gary?
Make a motion to refer the disposition of the alley back to the city administration for further review.
Support.
Move is supported, any questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Basmus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item four, Communications A, from Mayor Basmus, deferral of city manager evaluation.
Okay, thank you. We all have that favorite time of the year, where we get to evaluate the city manager, and he's been doing very well, and I'm sure in all our eyes, but with the, when you look at the city manager starting his fourth year of employment with the city of Sioux St. Marie, and will be completed on June 11th, 2018. The city manager's employment agreement with related amendments has been included for the review of the city commission. In the past years, the city commission has created a committee for the purpose of evaluating the city manager's performance. And we've done that every year since his employment. I would recommend that due to the larger-than-usual turnover of the city commission, within the recent months, that the city commission wait until the spring of 2019 to form such a committee, and doing so, this would provide Newark's city commissioners a larger period of time during which to evaluate the city manager's performance. That is a recommendation of mine, I won't make the motion, but we can have a discussion if you like. Commissioner Twardy?
Well, sure, discussion, and then I'd like to make the motion. Being on this committee a couple of times, it was very, very difficult. I always believed that you can never better yourself unless you're given constructive criticism. And it was always very difficult to give Oliver anything bad to say. My biggest construction, constructive criticism to him, it has always been, and I continue to check up on him with this, is I want him to remember that he is also a husband, and he is also a father, and he needs to make sure that his family is also a very important aspect of his life, and he does that very, very well. So it's really hard to grade him at anything less than a five, but I try really, really hard. But you have to nitpick in order to find less than a five for Oliver Turner. So that being said, I would like to make the motion that we take Mayor Basmus's recommendation that the city commission wait until the spring of 2019 to next form the city manager's evaluation committee.
Support.
Move is supported, are there any comments? All of you in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If it was same side, motion carried, I thank you very much.
Item B, under Communications, is from the Airport Advisory Board, capital budget amendment for runway drainage project at Sanderson Field.
Okay, thank you, city manager Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, I've requested that EDC Executive Director Holt address the city commission.
Evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city commission, thank you. Okay, as we know, Sanderson Field has gone through extensive construction projects over the last several years, and we've been very fortunate to have been able to get grant funding from the state to help us accomplish that with a 90% grant funding and 10% local match out of our Tifa funding. We were informed, albeit very surprisingly, in January, at a meeting at M.AerO, or Air Michigan Aeronautics, that this funding is no longer available for our type of airports. And it was, it caught us off guard, and we looked for some explanation. And it was given that these type of private airports, non-commercial airports, are no longer going to be funded as they were in the past. Well, that put us in a bit of a dilemma, because we had a plan to not only resurface our runway, but also to improve the badly needed drainage issues on the runway, which have not been done in quite, quite a few years. I think back in the 70s was the last time it was addressed, if I remember correctly. So in order to protect our investment and the state's investment, we're going to have to, it's our request, to move forward with the drainage project utilizing Tifa III funding. It's, it was discovered during the last project last year, just how bad the drainage problem was. So our engineer has confirmed that the drainage needs to be installed in order to support the life of the runway and the recent investments of AERO and Tifa III. And that is directly from the engineer. The parallel project, or the, this was, project was slated to commence in 2018. However, as I mentioned, the state funding may push it back, and that's our next project, is a parallel. The parallel taxi runway, we'll address that at another time. This proposal was presented to the Airport Advisory Board on March 18th, and they supported moving the project forward, utilizing the Tifa III funds. And the Tifa III board meeting on April 10th approved the funding for approval of the use of the funds for the drain project. There was some small amount of money left over from the last round of funding in the amount of $16,739. So that said, what we're asking for is to appropriate money from the Tifa III funding So that said, what we're asking for is to appropriate money from the Tifa III funding in the amount of $151,860 to go along with the grant funding from M.Aero in the amount of $16,739.
Commissioner Collins.
Can you explain for the audience what the Tifa III funding is, where it comes from?
Yes. The Tifa III funding is a zone that captures state taxes from a zone that stretches in and around the airport and in and around, for instance, the Meyer store, and we capture those state taxes. And that helps us replenish the funds every year.
Thank you.
City manager, is that, somebody had a look on her face like it's not quite correct.
Right, so the Tifa III district, Mr. Holt is correct, in that it captures taxes that are local from the local units. So it's, they're locally established villages, certain villages that aggregate and are dedicated for reinvestment in the district. So it's based, just like TIF I or TIF II downtown districts, on the incremental growth over the base year, and then those funds are accrued, and then there's a dedicated plan for the use of those funds for specified purposes. For example, in this instance, for the airport infrastructure.
So for the average person that's out there that you want to explain Tifa III funds to, what's the easiest way to explain that?
So the best way to explain it?
Yeah.
In the most direct fashion that I could as a city manager, not being very verbose, is that it collects taxes from growth after a certain date from the properties in the district. So there aren't taxes coming in for those infrastructure improvements from other parts of the city. So I live on Dillon Street. I would not be having my taxes go into this project. It's a dedicated funding source that is used for the improvement.
And that's the third Tifa. We have two others that do the similar type thing, and all the money that is collected is spent in the district, but it's collected from the district and after, after a certain floor is met, when they initially set the, set the bar for the Tifa. Commissioner Gary?
And that's, that's a good point. That's the point I wanted to make, was that this is Tifa funds, this is not general funds that we're looking at for this project. And so could you explain a little bit about how they found the issue and maybe a little bit about the PFC overlay and the total cost of that and how that has worked out?
The total cost of the PFC overlay last year was, I believe, around $600,000 some change, and of that, 90% came from the state. And in the process of re-surfacing the runway, they found that the drainage was not up to, up to standard. And so that was what led to, we kind of knew, looking back in the history of the airport, there was, there was some knowledge that there was drainage issues out there, but it wasn't realized until the construction crew and engineering crew got on site that that was in the sculpt that it is and that is sorely needed to protect the investment.
Commissioner Twardy? You still, you still, Commissioner?
And that's, and that's a good point, because we had a discussion, I think, at the airport board, I'm the liaison, why the QOE didn't find this prior to construction, but it was something that they found during the construction of the new PFC overlay. So it was something that couldn't have been foreseen, and it had a little bit to do with the grant funding that was coming from the Michigan Aero as to how they had to time this as well.
Correct.
So not general fund money, nothing that could have been foreseen, needs to be done to protect a $600,000 project.
Right.
Okay. Just a comment, there are two recommendations, there's two separate motions, but Commissioner Twardy.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions and comments. First of all, I think it's really a bummer that, and we did bring this up to our legislators when we were down there a few weeks ago, that there's, and I can't remember the number, Oliver knows the number, of how many actual airports are within this bu, this pool and this bucket that do need to be considered, who are still very important to our community and still should be considered for federal funding for these improvements and these maintenance problems, because obviously the city of Sioux-St. Marie would have a very hard time keeping up with all of the maintenance to do with an airport. Number two, even though this is coming from Tifa II, and I know that this was a surprise, I know that we have to make sure that we're, Tifa III, sorry. Well, did I, okay, Tifa III. So I know that this is coming from Tifa III, but, and I know this, this was a surprise, but I also know that the Tifa funds need to reflect this amount of money, and I know that we're right on budget season, so is, is this Tifa decrease going to be affected into the 1819 fiscal year or the 1718 fiscal year?
City manager?
That's a great question, Commissioner. Thank you for that question. The budget, the recording of the expenditures would occur at the time that the work is performed. So depending on when the work is performed, it may be one or both fiscal years, but as far as the Tifa III funds, it's my understanding that after this project is completed with the local match, there would be approximately $400,000 remaining in the Tifa III balance.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Twardy, you'd like to make a motion?
Motion.
You're going to take two, two motions, I mentioned.
Sure. I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute the presented project agreement.
Support.
The move is supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
I also make a motion that we approve the funding for this project in the amount of $151,860 for a total estimated project cost of $168,599, including M.Aero funding of $16,739.
Support.
The move is supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Item four, under communications, is C, from Sioux Events, update on 350th activities and citywide cleanup.
Okay, we have Mary Jo. Evening, Mary Jo.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. How are you tonight?
Excellent.
Well, I've got some of the fun stuff to fill you in on. First of all, we'll start off with the citywide cleanup. There are some flyers up here, if anyone is interested. We have it scheduled for May 19th this year. I'm saying a little prayer that our snow is gone, if you could join me with that. We will be having local students do t-shirts, designs for the t-shirts this year. Our deadline for that is going to be this week. We've had several come in already, so we'll have t-shirts for everyone who participates. Please have your groups, your organizations, or anybody interested contact our office to schedule the area that you guys would like to clean up and focus on within our community. Also this year, with our 350th anniversary that we have, we are purchasing through Sioux Events 350 white pine, which is our state tree, seedlings from the conservation district. And up at our picnic after the cleanup, we will be handing those out to anyone in the community who would be interested in planting one in their yard, on their property, out at camp, or whatever they would like, okay? So there'll be one feature that will be added this year to our cleanup. Are there any questions on that?
Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. So now we'll get to the-
And start time, of course, we start-
Start time's nine o'clock.
And we start-
Some people get out a little earlier, but-
Commission starts 7:30 at Frank's, and I do breakfast for yous? I mean, I pay for breakfast, I don't do breakfast.
You're not cooking for them?
Yeah. So we start there and then we go to the west portage and work our way down to the, normally around the Park Place City Center area type of thing, and it's normally a pretty good time. So if you want to show up, we appreciate it. Thanks.
So we've been working diligently on the 350th anniversary. We've had a lot of great events already. Most recently, we have started our tribal talks. They are being hosted by the Bayless Library. Colleen Medicine from the Sioux Tribe Cultural Department is scheduling different speakers from both the Sioux Tribe and the Bay Mills Tribe to come in and just, you know, different talks about different topics within the tribe. Also, I was always very curious about a powwow and never really have gone to a powwow because I don't know the proper etiquette and I want to be able to be respectful. So one of their topics is going to be powwow etiquette, because they do welcome the community. You don't have to be tribal to attend. So that's one that I happen to be looking forward to, but there's other topics out there. You can check the www.souistmary.com's website, and they'll have a list of them, as well as our Sioux Events page on Facebook. We'll update the speaker every month, and it's free to the public, so come on out and sit in on one of our tribal talks. We had a great turnout last week, it was really enjoyable. One of the other elements that we're doing is, we've, you know, of course, had to ask for sponsors for the 350th anniversary. There's always some funding that we need to make things work, and one thing that we've done is started a plaque. We have sponsorships of platinum, gold, silver, and bronze. They're all different levels. This plaque has started to get, be filled, so we have ordered a second one, and this will be located in the city.
Excellent.
The big project that we're working on right now is the festival. The festival will be hosted July 20th through the 22nd. It'll be down at Annie Osborne Park. We will have tents put up, we'll have music, we'll have different live entertainment, there will be food, there'll be food competitions there, a big family event for everyone to celebrate our history. It'll include historical games, just other fun games for kids, coloring mural contest. We also will be having historical booths, booths on genealogy, history of the Sioux, history of our waterways. Our water is such an important factor here in our community, and we want to be able to touch on that. We also will be having a photo timeline from 1668 to 2018, and we will be inviting people in the community to come out and post their historical pictures, whether it be family to show where the families have come from, come from throughout the years, and also landscape and, you know, different buildings and how they've developed in that over the years. We also will be doing some kayak races on the river. We'll be having yoga. We're hoping to get 350 people. We're going to do about 9:30 at night, and it's going to be glow yoga. So I hope everybody can come on out for that. It should be fun. Also, one thing that I'm very excited about is on Sunday, we'll be having a pancake breakfast for our veterans. Anyone who has their DD-214 or active-duty military ID, come on down and have breakfast for us, with us. It'll be pancakes and sausage. We have a company that's coming out and kind of putting on a little bit of show. They're going to flip the cakes as they've got them going on your grill, and it's going to be your job to catch them with your plate, so good luck with that. It'll be $7 to the general public, and with the proceeds from that, we'll be able to pay for the veterans' breakfast in our community. We also have a couple businesses that have stepped up and are going to sponsor some as well. We'll do some pre-sales on tickets, so you'll see more, more information on that as it becomes available and gets closer. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No, you just keep going. We got, you have a whole list of stuff there, but you get to go on.
We do. We're collecting items daily or weekly, I guess, for our time capsule that we'll end the year with, also with a performance down at the Polar on December 16th. We'll end our year-long celebration, and we'll close that time capsule and also celebrate the history that the Polar has with us.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your evening.
Question? Commissioner Baker?
Not so much as a question, just more of an applause, because I thought no one had more irons in the fire than I do, and I know you do, so thank you for-
As long as I don't burn any of them.
Thank you so much for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
I'm really excited for this event.
I look forward to it.
And make sure if you want to get involved, volunteer, come help out. I know you need them.
Absolutely. This, this event, this whole year, doesn't work with just one person or all the people in our office that work on it. It is a community event, and if we want to celebrate our community, we do need our community to step up and help. So if anyone is interested, please give me a call.
And what's your, what's your number?
My number is 632-3366, and I'm in the Sioux Convention and Visitor Bureau office.
Great.
You can get ahold of us at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number five is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, under the city manager's report, would provide authorization to purchase a bucket truck from the Chippewa County Road Commission. As commissioners are aware, the purchase of a new bucket truck has been included in the current fiscal year budget at an allocation of $130,000. The city's current unit is a 2001 model nearing the end of its practical lifespan. This unit is used almost on a daily basis for the maintenance of signage and traffic signals, among other purposes. It is also regularly used for other duties such as bulb replacement, decoration and banner installation and removal, and other tasks requiring an elevated platform. Last month, the Chippewa County Road Commission offered to sell the city its used 2007 bucket truck for $20,000. The commission recently purchased a new unit, and the Department of Public Works thoroughly inspected the truck and found it to be in significantly better condition than the city's current unit. It also has some options that the current unit does not, such as four-wheel drive. Additionally, the truck comes equipped with a number of expensive hydraulic tools, a chainsaw and post driver, and most importantly, a front-mounted post puller. The city's current truck does not have these accessories. These included tools would cost slightly over $10,000 to purchase new. They are all in good to very good condition, and the truck has been properly serviced and passed recent inspections. Prior to this offer from the Chippewa County Road Commission, the city was in the process of developing specifications for the purchase of a new truck and was preparing to go out for bids in early May. This opportunity will allow the city to delay the purchase of another truck for a few more years, and the replacement truck would be placed in the CIP for fiscal year 2021 to '22. If the purchase is approved, administration would paint the truck dark blue to match the rest of the fleet's similarly sized chassis trucks. This is an excellent opportunity to upgrade the city's fleet at minimal cost and also return $110,000 to the Stock and Equipment Fund for the purchase of other needed equipment. Accordingly, there are two recommendations. The first would be that the city commission waive the bidding requirements as provided in Section 12.1 of the city charter to allow for the purchase of this bucket truck from the Chippewa County Road Commission, since no advantage would be gained by competitive bidding, and secondarily, to approve the purchase of a 2007 Ford F-550 bucket truck and accessories from the Chippewa County Road Commission at a cost of $20,000. With a specific regard to the first recommendation, my recommendation and determination is that sealed bids would not be advantageous due to the fact that this proposal would represent a unique opportunity to obtain a highly functional equipment unit with additionally valuable equipment that also represents an opportunity to save $110,000 or 84% of the originally budgeted amount, and that this is a uniquely structured arrangement and meets the immediate needs of the department and provides safe working equipment for our employees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I also think a letter of appreciation goes to the Chippewa County Road Commission board members and administrator. Thanking them. Anything else that might come up in the process? They've got other, other stuff that we might want to take a look at. If it's that good, it's a great deal. Commissioner Talantino, there's two motions, each one would have to be separate.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we waive the bidding requirements as provided in Section 12.1 of the city charter to allow for the purchase of the bucket truck from the Chippewa County Road Commission, since no advantage would be gained by competitive bidding.
Support.
The move is supported, plus the fact that in order to do this, it must be a unanimous vote. Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes. Motion carried. Commissioner Talantino?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of a 2007 Ford F-550 bucket truck and accessories from the Chippewa County Road Commission for the cost of $20,000.
Support.
The move is supported. Any questions, comments? We support it. Any questions, comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
I do have one question.
Uh, Commissioner Twardy?
Uh, in the gift of giving and paying forward, what's gonna currently happen to the current bucket truck? Because I know that there is um, the director of the DDA who is in desperate need of a bucket truck.
Is it, is it worth, is, does it work and is it worth salvaging to the?
Uh, that's a great question, Commissioner. It's my understanding that the condition of the bucket truck is such that it should be deobligated.
Okay.
Certainly, we'll continue to have those conversations with the DDA.
Okay, I tried, Justin.
You wanna put him into something that's not safe.
Well, he's got a ladder for now, so thank you.
And they could use it, I'm sure, right? They, they partner, right?
Right, certainly the partnership would, in, in the essence of partnership, continue to explore equipment opportunities. Absolutely. Item B, under the city manager's report, would provide authorization to collect community donations to paint and decal an old patrol unit going to the high school criminal justice program. On this matter, I request that Chief Riley present to the city commission.
Okay.
Evening, Chief. The school year's uh, coming quickly to a close and we are approaching September. Hopefully that will be gone by September. Seven entities in the Sioux area have gotten together and as you know, we're working on a high school program. Uh, we're not allowed to call it a, a high school, please, a academy. It's a law enforcement, public safety program through the Sioux Area Career Center. Um, we're all excited. They're law enforcement entities and education, LSSU, along with the high school and then a bunch of law enforcement. And we're, uh, the school's doing most of the work on this, quickly putting it together. There's a lot of work to be done still. All the law enforcement agencies uh, are gonna contribute what they can to get it up and running and to keep it running. And that includes being instructors, uh, part of the advisory committee and donating surplus equipment when we can. An important piece of equipment is a car. Uh, you can't run a police academy. You can't run a police department without police cars. And uh, the commission graciously uh, approved donating uh, one of our old cars, which is Car One. It's sitting behind our station right now. It has been stripped down. Our new Car One is back, is up on the road. My issue is, I don't want that car to be confused. Once we turn it over to the high school, I don't want it to be confused as one of our police cars. Um, this car will be used by kids in the program under strict supervision, not to leave the school property unless it's going out for maintenance. But if it happens to run a stop sign, I don't wanna get calls in my office, "Hey, one of your cops ran a stop sign." I'd like to paint the car white. Um, there's no white police cars in the area. Uh, us and MSP have blue cars. The tribe has blue cars. Sheriff runs brown. But I'd like to have the car painted white and also decal with the career center uh, information on it. You'll see on the, the white car there, that's their symbol. And they were very specific on the lettering, law enforcement slash public safety. Uh, that'll, that'll go on to it. None of us have the money for this in our budgets. Um, not even MSP. And they get their money from Lansing. But we're looking for painting and decals roughly uh, just over $4,300. So I, I've talked to the city manager and coming to you, requesting authorization. I'll volunteer my services to collect community donations. Uh, Scott doesn't know it yet, but he's gonna get what I'm reading from right here because we're gonna need him. Uh, it's a good chunk of change. They have this car painted. We've gotten uh, an estimate from M&amp;R Auto Body. And he even slashed his price a bit as his contribution towards the program. Uh, the decals, uh, it's a company that we get our decals from, from our cars. And they cut the price a little bit. It's their contribution. Um, so I'm requesting permission from the uh, commission uh, to allow me to seek public donations. Um, I'll, I'll put it out through the media and we're gonna hit Facebook. I don't do that. I don't know how to do Facebook. But we'll, we'll hit all that stuff. Younger kids can do that. And hopefully before September, we'll have that car painted and uh, decal, equipped and ready to go for the students.
I just appreciate the, the chief's uh, interest in generating, you know, enthusiasm for this program and it's certainly a program uh, that I think leverages a lot of resources locally to provide future career opportunities.
I missed that in my notes. This is an ideal, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. Thank you so much for um, taking this on. It's uh, gonna be fun to watch grow. Um, also, I was just curious, have you looked into with the Sioux High and the auto shop and whatnot with them possibly painting the car and any kind of a?
I have. Um, you didn't get this, but this is in my notes. Uh, that was one of the first things I checked on. They do have a, in their career center, an auto body shop. They do not do bodywork. They do mechanical work, which this car is going to need mechanical, mechanical work, 'cause we're rough on our cars. We have to be. Uh, so they're gonna take care of the mechanics. This will take care of the painting and the decals. It's an excellent opportunity for everybody. These kids, uh, they did a survey in uh, the seventh and eighth graders a couple of years ago. Law enforcement, I believe was number two uh, in career choices at that young age. So there's an interest. The school knows there's an interest. It opens up a, a program to the students. This way they can decide if, you know, to try it out. If they don't like it, they look at something else. Uh, they'll move right into LSSU. We're working on the program with LSSU between the high school and LSSU uh, for an early associate's degree and a head start into the bachelor's degree. Lets us, law enforcement administrators, look at these kids at an earlier age. We look at them at the, the police academy right now at LSSU. Some of my officers are instructors there. The sheriff is an instructor there, so we can see them there. Well, this gives us an earlier shot to look at these kids. And they'll be interning with us, with all of the agencies, including central dispatch and the prosecutor's office. I have that here and uh, it's on the information that I'm going to give Scott. Yeah, um, what we've done, we've set up uh, working with Kristen from finance. There is a donation account. So they're not going to my house. They're gonna be going into a city account that Kristen, it's uh, set up for donations. And for this purpose, it's not gonna be commingled with other funds for other donations. It'll be for this purpose. Uh, but the checks, uh, they need to be dropped off to me or mailed to me at the police department, 401 Hersley. I will get those to the finance department through our deposit process. Our clerks will write receipts. It's uh, it's my understanding from Kristen that it is tax deductible uh, contribution. Um, so they'll be going into that account, but the checks need to be made out to the city of Sioux-St. Marie, not to John Riley. In the memo, they can put. Yeah. In the memo, they can put high school car donation, you know, that helps us and the finance department identify that check as, it's going into this account. But it needs to be made out to the city of Sioux-St. Marie.
I, I see, thank you. I, I see the cost of the project is $4,500.
It's just over $4,300.
$4,300, okay. I'm just, I'm asking the fellow commissioners if uh, if we're, if we are able to, if we're financially able to, we could put a group donation together and maybe we can uh, give it to you at the next meeting.
Uh, that's up to you. Absolutely. You know, the, the city made their contribution with the car. And my time and some of my officer's time when the program gets up and running, 'cause we're gonna be instructing over there.
Yeah, thank you.
That'd be great. It'd be a great head start. I'm gonna be looking for uh, citizens, businesses, you know, whoever can contribute. Uh, the car still needs a, a few pieces of equipment. The light bar needs to be changed out with white lights instead of blue lights. It can't have blue lights. So there's odds and ends that will need it, will be needed.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd appreciate that. I have permission?
Make a motion that um, Chief Riley can move forward with his efforts of getting the car painted.
Support.
Thank you.
Item C, under the city manager's report, would provide for the approval of a police and fire pension application for the waiver of underfunded status. On this matter, I've requested that Finance Director and Treasurer, Kristen Collins, present to the city commission.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Um, in January, the State of Michigan Department of Treasury wanted to get a report from all pension funds across the state to determine their funded status. And um, as, as you all know, we've struggled with our funded status of uh, the Police and Fire Pension Fund and it was determined um, to be underfunded, which would be six, under 60% funded. Um, and that was a preliminary determination by the um, depart, uh, the new group that, at the Department of Treasury that was reviewing all of the um, of, all of the submissions from different pension funds throughout the state. So the next step was to, they requested that they all file an application for a waiver of underfunded status, which um, you have before you. Um, as part of this waiver, the city would be explaining what they have done in the past um, in order to be proactive and try to um, improve the funded, funded ratio. And so on page two of the application, the first area is the system design changes. And by this, they're talking about um, pension nego, or negotiations of benefits that are um, part of the contracts. So, among other things, but this is kind of the city's end as opposed to the pension board's end. And so in an attachment, I explained contractual negotiations had yielded quite a few improvements going back as far as 1993. What um, the city had negotiated was that um, as of 7/1, 1993, police patrol um, excluded retiree payouts of, from the final average compensation. And that includes the sick payout, vacation, personal leave, and, and then included in that was the healthcare opt-out. So what I mean by retiree payouts is when a retiree um, is retiring, they would get paid the balance of a sick or um, or vacation pay. And you know, it, it might seem like a small thing, but they add up. And so excluding these from the fin, the final average compensation then reduces the obligation to the retiree over his, his or her lifetime. As of 7/1, 2002, the police command excluded their healthcare opt-out from the FAC. That's short for final average compensation. The healthcare opt-out is a payment that um, is, ends up being $5,400 for any employee that does not need to have city insurance. And um, $5,400 seems like quite a bit of money. Um, however, the cost of a family, as we all know, it's quite a bit more. It's around $15,000 and change. So the city is saving money, but um, this payout is now excluded from FAC. In 7/1, effective 7/1, 2008, the firefighters excluded sick leave retiree payouts. The 2012 change was fire captains excluding vacation retiree payouts. There were quite a few of them going right up until firefighters in 2013 excluded vacation from their FAC. And then um, additionally, the city has not agreed to post retirements like um, increases for the retirees since 1994. Any of those increases have been one time only and, and very few and far between. So um, I did explain also that um, there's negotiations going on right now and that one point of opposition was uh, items for the benefit package. And so those were going to mediation. So I'm sure you're all very familiar with where we stand on negotiations and you may or may not be more familiar with what the pension board has done. So that was the, the next set of things is the other consideration statement for this form were, were things that the pension board has done to improve funding. In June 30th, um, 2012, I only went back to 2012 'cause it wasn't as easy to access the information as it was for the negotiations. 2012, the pension board reduced the rate of return assumption from 8% to 7.5%. And they updated their mortality table because at that time, people were living longer. And people continue to live longer, but in, in the actuarial world, mortality tables were having a hard time catching up with how long people were living. And then the rate of return assumption, you know, we've all heard about the markets. And um, 8% just is not happening anymore. Everyone was kind of understanding that. But um, in 2012, we reduced it from 8 to 7.5. And that's before quite a few, that was before murders did that. In June 30th, 2014, uh, we reduced the amortization of the unfunded liability from 25 years open to 20 years closed. Did you have any question? Anybody? Okay. 20 to 25, it's like your mortgage. We pay, we'll pay it down quicker. In 2017, we reduced the return, rate of return assumption from 7.5 to 7. That was a huge um, reduction. And then we increased the closed amortization back up to 20 years. All of these changes hopefully will improve the funding of the plan. Um, we expect it to be above 60% in 2021 and fully funded in 2037. Did anybody have any questions? This needs to be approved by the commission um, and submitted today. So I get this email.
Taking an awful lot of work, we realize. Commissioner Twardy?
Uh, thank you. Just, I, you know, I, I'm uh, the commission liaison to the Police and Fire Pension Board and I just give a lot of credit to the board. Kristen does a great job and we're constantly looking at the numbers. I still think 7% is a little high and I think we all kind of think 7% is a little high. We haven't met our mark for quite some time. And we did just recently uh, change fund managers, so it'll be exciting to see what this new fund manager is able to help us out with. Um, so it, it, and I'm really gonna be curious to see what the State of Michigan is gonna find interesting with all of this influx of new information and how it's actually gonna impact us back in the city. Because it's, it's a lot of information for them to try and analyze and we're not that bad. For us to be 50.6% funded when our fund is so mature, I don't, I don't really think that that's that bad of a number, but.
We, we um, we bring in about, you know, city contributions is gonna be a million six. We pay out a million, between a million seven and a million nine. That qualifies us as a mature fund. We rely that much more on that investment return. We've been taking very seriously that our performance has been uh, less than stellar. And so we have, uh, we're hopeful that this new investment advisor will have some fresh ideas and that it'll get us, help us to get back on the right path. But um, your comments are very much appreciated.
Thank you for all of your hard work.
Commissioner Gary?
It's amazing to see in that chart, the original uh, uh, obligation of 300 and some thousand dollars a year and now it's 1.6 million. Pretty scary. Uh, now this is an application for waiver of determination of unfunded, underfunded status. What happens if we are not approved?
If we're not approved, we're gonna get um, help from the state. I would imagine we would be subject to a little more scrutiny and other review. And the state will probably come up with some recommendations. Um, we'll just wait and see. I, I don't really know what the state will do.
Do we have any idea what their parameters are or how many communities are in this uh?
It's not been disclosed, it's not been disclosed um, what, what their plan is, but how many communities, I haven't looked into it. Um, I would be curious as well and I can, I'll let you know when I, when I do get some kind of summary report.
And 60% funded is the trigger for us to have to get the waiver?
Yeah. Now, we were 56% funded on our actuarial valuation, but we were 50.6 in the other way of looking at it. The GASB reporting that we have and.
Actual numbers.
And that is the more conservative approach, which using a, a different rate of return.
Any other comments or questions? Well, we need a motion. Commissioner Gary? No, no, let's go to the liaison person. Commissioner Twardy?
I make a motion that we approve the presented application for waiver of underfunded status, Form 5583.
Support. We support it. Thank you, Kristen. Any questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
That concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay. Uh, item number six is a status report.
Thank you. Item A under status reports is an update on the Police and Fire Pension Fund Investment Advisor. Uh, appreciate the presentation by Director Collins and just an update uh, that in the vein of progress that the city's looking to make, that as the commission is aware, uh, the Police and Fire Pension Board has been very focused on uh, the investment returns which have been accruing over the past several years. In the spring of 2017, the board contracted uh, with Mr. Brian Green of ANCO uh, to perform a review of performance over the past 10 years for the fund. So he looked specifically at uh, fund performance, asset allocation, investment manager fees and other related indicia. Uh, six responses from interested firms were received from a uh, request for information which was sent out to possible fund managers uh, to move forward with the fund. And the Police and Fire Pension Board made a switch from FEG to Greystone and Morgan. and Fire Pension Board made a switch from FEG to Greystone and Morgan Stanley. At this time, there's no recommendation associated with the status report, and certainly appreciate the very elaborate process which the Police and Fire Pension Board, which Finance Department, went through. It's a very detailed process, and they put a lot of time into it, and appreciate their efforts. But as I mentioned, there's not necessarily a recommendation at this time, but City Administration will be sending out proposed dates for a joint meeting of the Commission and Pension Board, which would occur during the second quarter to dive into the details, not only the change but of the fund and further scope.
Okay. Any questions, City Manager? Okay.
Item B, under Status Reports, is an update on the Downtown Form-Based Code. Director Freeman will be providing a brief update to the City Commission.
Fairly brief?
Always.
It's getting longer.
At each of your positions, you should find a...
Yes, we did.
...draft schedule for the Form-Based Code, Sherrett. I'm about ninety-five percent sure that this is going to be what it's going to be, but once it's finalized, the City Manager and I will launch into an all-out media blitz, because this is a pretty big deal. We haven't seen anything like this in the zoning ordinance since nineteen sixties. But the big date is May eighth at seven P.M. at the Ramada Ojibwe Hotel will be the kickoff meeting. The public is invited, encouraged. Our target for this effort is anybody who cares about the downtown. So I brought this to you now because I won't see you again until the day before the kickoff, and that's a little bit late to get the word out, so we'll reach out to Mr. Brand and some of our other media outlets in the city once we're finalized and head on from there.
Okay, Tuesday, May eighth is the start date.
Correct. Yep, they'll be here until Friday, May eleventh, and what they'll be doing is collecting information on community preferences, ideas, you know, what the citizens and the people who participate want to see in the downtown going ahead. They'll use that information to write a first draft of a code, and they'll be back in July to present that to the community.
Any questions, Kelly?
This is our first step.
City Manager?
Certainly appreciate his facilitating this endeavor and the input that we've received from the business owners who are engaged in the process with the Form-Based Code Committee. Being formed has certainly been a great avenue for dialogue and for discussing what form the downtown would take in the future. And just to clarify the role of the Form-Based Code, I think we view our roles, at least at City Administration, and I know as custodians of the public trust, trying to preserve our unique history, our cultural assets, and as development occurs, making sure that it's in line with community expectations, that we continue to preserve our, our rich community fabric.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Kelly.
Item C, under Status Reports, is a reminder that on May second, from six P.M. to seven P.M., there will be a special City Commission work session for the purposes of providing agenda management training with the new platform of board docs.
All right. Commissioner Gary?
I'm not available that night, but I'm sure the Mayor will give one-on-one training in computer software management.
We'll reschedule with Bonnie. Okay.
And that concludes the City Manager, excuse me, the status report. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, seven matters presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, we thank you. Item number eight, matters presented by the City Commission. Commissioner Baker?
Just a few things to talk about. I hate to give more attention to Facebook and online stuff, but I really see a lot of negativity on there, and it's unfortunate because just like with any, any business in general, you hear ten more complaints than you actually do hear compliments. So I really encourage people to focus on what is happening and the good things that are happening and comment on those. There's lots of different projects going on. Get out and volunteer. I'm excited to announce that Beer Fest tickets for Malone's Fifth Annual Beer Fest, August eleventh. Make sure you get your babysitter and all your stuff sorted out for that day, so you don't have to call in sick. They're available online at suevents.com with a nice little description of all the different events that'll be going on that day, and ten percent of all profits generated from the Malone's Michigan Beer Fest this year will be going to another awesome project, the community, or Chippewa County Family Project, which is building the townhouse duplex up on Three Mile for homeless kids in our community. So that's August eleventh. August is a busy month. Take every Saturday off, because right after that, August eighteenth, you've got the sub day from the Community Foundation that they're putting on, which is just getting bigger and better. Also, August twenty-fifth, the Malcolm Pride Park Committee has designated that day to be our Malcolm Park Pride Field of Dreams.
So you're going to start, this is, this is...
Kickball extravaganza.
And that's going on in August, so now you're going to start using commission time to...
Yeah, it's, it's, because the crowdfunding page will be up and on, on board here in the near future, and hopefully by the three months, it'll give us to raise at least twenty thousand dollars for improvements to Malcolm Field.
Excellent. Good luck.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Commissioner Twardy?
I just wanted to say huge congratulations to Brimley High School, who just won the state robotics championship. This is a, this is a great feat. I don't, I don't know if Sioux area high school has ever won the state champ, I think they have, they've won it a couple of times, but I know that Brimley High School has never won the state championship, and for a little tiny town like Brimley to be competing against some of these giant towns in the state of Michigan, it's a huge kudo for them. Now they'll be heading off to the national championship sometime within the next month, and I just want to wish them good luck, and we can't wait to hear what you bring back to the Eastern U.P.
And that's from the City Commission?
Yes.
Also. Thank you. Anyone else? Let's go to Commissioner Gary.
I make a motion. Will you adjourn this meeting?
Support.
Move and support. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same sign.